My name is Pramila Malik. I'm the Chair of Protect Orange County. The facts and the lengthy eight-year record for this project clearly demonstrates that the permitting process for this plant, as well as all related facilities, including the proposed lateral pipeline, was corrupted and compromised from the very beginning. When the DEC allowed the small town of Waianae to planning board to be lead agency for the largest power plant and hence source of pollution in the state of New York, to be sited in a critical environmental area in Class II protected agricultural district, we've spent six years trying to avail of a complex review process which pits our community against an army of paid lobbyists, litigators, regulators, and billion-dollar companies who engage in backdoor deals, strong-arm tactics, fraud, deception, manipulation, and yes, even bribery, and they refer to it as ZD, in case you're wondering. We've had to expend enormous personal resources and time while trying to fulfill our responsibilities to our children, home, and work. Had CPV been forced to use the proper Article 10 siting process, which is designed specifically for power plant siting, the public would have had access to resources to hire the experts needed to protect our health, safety, and natural resources. We did not. So from the very beginning, CPV figured out how to game the system. I live in the town of Minisink. In 2011, I received a notice that Millennium would build a natural gas compressor station near my home, despite the fact that our local zoning laws prohibited it. When I went to my town officials, they informed me immediately that it was for a power plant. I had no idea at the time what they were talking about, but CPV, Millennium, and many state and local officials certainly did. However, they deliberately kept the public in the dark. Ironically, more than eight years after they began their secret review, they sent out their first broad notice to residents in Waianae just a few days ago, a PR stunt to deceive people. Why? Because the people in the town only became aware of this when they saw construction underway and are now rightfully upset. And many more people will be impacted in the city of Middletown, and they receive no notification whatsoever, and they likely still don't know. CPV is suddenly concerned because they know they cannot operate without this pipeline, even though they refused to include the pipeline in the original secret review for the project. SECR is clear on segmentation and the requirement to assess cumulative impacts for all related and/or synergistic projects in the foreseeable future. This is part one of two, and I submit into evidence this box of ZD. Thank you for joining us, everybody. My name is Pramila Malik. I'm from Protect Orange County, and we have several impacted residents, both from Orange County as well as from Sullivan County, and really from around the state of New York, because this is a project of statewide significance and statewide impact. In fact, it has regional impact. It has global impact. And yet, here we are. The decision to approve this was issued by a small, little-town planning board. But here we are in the city of Middletown. Middletown is going to be more impacted by this project in terms of population than any other population center in the state of New York. And yet, Middletown had virtually no say in this process. This is the first DEC hearing, and this is the last DEC hearing, for the approval of the lateral pipeline, which is the last permit this project, the CPV Valley Energy Plant, which is a 650-megawatt frac gas power plant being built in the neighboring town of Waianae just less than a mile and a half is the crow flies from here. So everybody living in this area, and I remind people that there are a lot of poor people who live here, there's a diverse demographic that lives here, and none of these people were included in the process. Forget about the people in Middletown. Nobody in the town of Waianae was included in the process. The company sent out their first town-wide notice just a couple of days ago. This is after they claimed they have all of their approvals and they're 80% built. Why did they send out a notice now and not when the residents had the ability to participate in the process? And I would submit that's because they did not want the residents to participate in the process. Most residents only found out about this project when they saw the construction underway. And even in the early stages, nobody really knew what it was. So here we are. This is our last opportunity, and we are going to present all of the issues that were never, ever addressed by the town of Waianae, by the city of Middletown, by the Public Service Commission, by the DEC when they issued the air and water permits for this project. This lateral pipeline is the last critical component, and we are in a critical -- that lateral pipeline goes through a critical environmental area, through a protected agricultural district. It's a high-pressure pipeline that goes right through people's front yards, cuts through critical farmland. We have people who've come all the way from New York City who participate in community-supported agriculture programs, CSAs, and hundreds of them get their produce from Orange County. Orange County is critical for New York State's food shed. We have a farmer here whose farm was destroyed by the Millennium Pipeline years ago, and Millennium Pipeline refused to repair the damage, refused to repair the damage for years, refused to compensate this farmer for loss of tremendous amount of produce and profit from his farm. And these are family farmers. We have middle-class, hard-working families who've been forced out of their homes. We've had a 9/11 first responder who was forced out of his home. We have children getting sick in the town of Minisink. The compressor station that was built in Minisink was illegally segmented away from the power plant project, just like this lateral pipeline was illegally segmented away from this project. So we want Governor Cuomo to do the right thing now and pull the plug on this project. I have with me here a box of ZD, and this ZD represents the fact that we know the approval process was corrupted. One person has already pled guilty to bribery. We don't need to know more about this. Bribery continued well after the power purchase agreement was taken off the table, and it was continuous throughout that time period in which they got critical state approvals. So nobody can say that that bribery was not for state approvals. And given the numerous inconsistencies and anomalies and irregularities in the approval process, there is no other explanation as to why this project was approved other than this. So we're going to tell the state, please take back the ZD and give us our health, our safety, and our homes back. So I'm going to ask a couple of people quickly to talk about what they're going to testify to today. We have actor and activist James Cromwell. I'm going to ask him to go first.
First of all, I'd like to thank the press for being here. If you want to know how you're reaching your public, actually, there should be thousands of people out here. The fact that this community and other communities in this county are not aware of the damage that's going to be done by that plant has something to do with the lack of coverage that we have gotten. I hope you'll cover this event more scrupulously and convey to your readers something of the concern of all the people who are here. I'd also like to sarcastically thank the Big Greens for showing up and supporting us. We're a grassroots group with a very limited reach, and we have received practically no support over the entire time from the Big Greens, which means those people like Sierra Club and NRDC, Catskill Mountain Keepers and the like. I would like to say one thing. Everybody here counts. Everybody here has contributed to this. If we stop this, it will be because of you. This is not the last gasp. There will always be some other thing to do. We're not through, no matter what happens in there, no matter what the decision of this commission is, no matter what the governor determines. We are not going to stop. This is not going to happen. We will stop it. We will win.
As many of you may already know, six of us engaged in an act of civil disobedience in order to get the substantive issues into the official record and to call attention to the issue. And we had a fantastic attorney who litigated our necessity defense, which I think was very well presented. And so I'm going to ask Attorney Michael Sussman to make a few comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pramila, and I'm happy everyone is here today. I think the most important thing about our necessity defense is twofold. One, when the defense was presented in open court through three eminent scientists, the district attorney's office had the opportunity and right to cross-examine our witnesses. And there was essentially no cross-examination whatsoever. The necessity defense was really conceded. The issue the judge had was not whether climate change was real. The judge acknowledged that. Not whether there was now imminence. The judge essentially acknowledged that. But rather, at the time in December of 2015 when these events occurred, the site was at a very nascent stage, and therefore, there was no then, no imminence. Well, now there is imminence. I think everybody in this room agrees. Now there's imminence.
Yeah.
Okay? Eight hundred million dollars of imminence.
Okay, but remember two things. The Shoreham Plant was built on Long Island, $2.3 billion, and Mario Cuomo had the hoots butt to say, "You're not opening."
Yeah.
Also, remember, when this plant was built, as it's been built, it's been built with legal challenges that remain outstanding. The Second Department, let alone the Court of Appeals in our state, has never rendered a decision, has never heard oral argument on our appeal. And our appeal says something very simple. The secret process never was fulfilled. They never went through the detailed review, the hard look they had to go through. And when, in 2015 April, we said to them, "Now is your time to do that review," what did they do? They retreated and said, "Okay, we don't have a new site plan now, which would trigger the new review. We're going back to the old site plan." What are they afraid of? Why didn't they do the review, which the law required them to do?
Yeah.
Okay? These citizens from Orange County and beyond have a right to that review, and that review cannot be hijacked by private interests.
Yes!
Another question that's been raised around here today, and I'm not running for any political office, okay? So I can say this with a straight face and without anybody saying it's because of. We have county leadership that has done nothing to protect the citizens of this county. Nothing! Nothing whatsoever! None of this! None of that! 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 These county executives beholden, beholden to anybody who says, "I'm coming with the job," regardless of whether that job will compromise the health and safety of our citizens. And just like our president's major job is to protect Americans, the major job of our county executive is to protect our citizens right here. And this county executive has turned his back on the residents. He doesn't have the analytic capacity to understand what's going on. He's made no effort to understand what's going on, and he doesn't care about us. And he frankly should be booted right out of office.
Yeah!
And I think it's very important that we stand up and make clear. Legoland represents a ray of an area in Orange County that's been declared environmentally sensitive. The same is this. And we have this chiolyan. You know, it's ironic, though. When Valley View had 450 jobs at stake, union jobs, good-paying jobs, the county executive was forgetting rid of every one of them.
It's still in.
Don't let them hide behind, "I'm for job creation." Nonsense. "I'm behind those who will pocket me, who will give me money," and that's what's been revealed over and over again about them. And this fight, therefore, is on many levels. It's about our environment. It's about global warming. It's about, as Pramila says, the corruption of the review process. And it's about politicians who don't care about the people they represent. We've got to take the fight to them.
All right. So the next speaker is going to be the candidate for county executive. We definitely need elected officials who truly are ready to serve the public interest, not to open the floodgates to billion-dollar predatory companies. So please welcome Patrick Davis, candidate for county executive.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, as Pramila stated, I'm Pat Davis. I'm the candidate for Orange County Executive. I was driving down 84 the other day, and these two massive smokestacks are rising out of our beautiful natural landscape, soon to be spewing pollution into our atmosphere. These smokestacks represent two things for me: lack of transparency and corruption in government, and second, that we can do better. We can do better. My three-year-old son, Michael, loves to play outside. Many of us have left New York City and live in Orange County because we want to get away from the massive development and the pollution that's all in the city. It is unacceptable that we need to question the quality of the air, our children are breathing that we're breathing, and that the fact that the politicians out there are putting the interests of big money and big corporations before ours is simply unacceptable. I just want to remind everyone, I just want to remind everyone that the public comment period ends this Friday. It is absolutely crucial that we get our friends, our families, our neighbors, all, to get out there and voice their opinion on this. This is democracy in action, and it is critical, crucial, that the voices of the folks in Orange County are heard. Thank you.
I can feel the political winds changing. So when you approve a massive fracked gas power plant, this is the nature of gas, you necessitate a vast network of infrastructure, which includes new pipelines, compressor stations, metering stations, and of course, fracking wells. And we all know the environmental damage of fracking wells. So right now, I'm going to ask George Bellard, from Sullivan County Residents Against Millennium, to come up and speak about how this project is wreaking havoc on his community in Sullivan County.
Thank you, Pramila. Although we're here tonight to talk about VLC to DEC, as Pramila said, you really have to zoom back and look at the totality of the infrastructure that's being laid down across New York State. He knows. Preach. Anyways, we have to talk about the totality of the infrastructure that's being laid across New York State. So despite Governor Cuomo's making a lot of noise about banning fracking, when you lay down this infrastructure, you lash us to fracking for the next 30 to 40 years. And you do that by laying down pipeline, by putting in compressors. All of these compressor stations and pipelines, they all leak methane, they vent methane. Methane is 80 times more powerful a greenhouse gas than CO2. So when Mr. Cuomo talks about aligning himself with the Paris Agreement, if you allow this infrastructure to go in, that puts your environmental stance as a lie. Governor Cuomo has to walk the walk. These compressor stations, as Pramila has testified, has made people sick in Minisink. This has been studied. The DEC has this information. Now, suddenly, there are, in connection with this project, there's going to be four compressor stations in 52 miles, a fracked gas power plant, and a new pipeline. This puts a lie to Governor Cuomo's claims of being a green leader. We must hold him accountable.
So I first met Jim Bastak's wife at the hearing for the Minisink compressor station, and she came in and she testified, and she said, you know, "Millennium destroyed my family's onion farm." And I had no idea what she was talking about, but over the years, I got to know the family and I saw their daily struggle with Millennium, getting them to fulfill their promises, getting them to be good neighbors, getting them to repair the damage that they promised they were going to repair. And it has now been how many years? Six years and nothing. Millennium recently said, "Sorry, there's nothing they can do." And what's -- so I'm going to actually let Jim Bastak tell you his story himself. Come on, Jim.
Hello. I'm James Bastak, and I farm in Pine Island, New York, and I have a 100-acre farm. And since 2008, Millennium put the pipe in, and they had trouble putting the pipe in. Till now, it's 2009, no, it's 2017. It's nine years the farm has not been restored back to what it looked like before. And Millennium refuses to do any work. Ag and Market was running the project. They had to listen to Ag and Market. And Ag and Market, in the last two years, Millennium keeps telling them, "No, we're not going to fix anything." And they told me now that I should go and contact a lawyer. Now, Millennium refuses to fix our land. They told the Federal Regulatory Commission in Washington, DC, that they don't know how to fix our land. They don't know how to work in our kind of dirt. Now, how are they going to build another lateral line in West Town? I only live a mile and a half from where they're going to put the new line in, and the Millennium line in the black dirt in Pine Island is only about two miles away. And they do not know how to fix my land, and they refuse to. After nine years. And they made attempts to fix it, but they never did a good job. They cheated. And they lied to a lot of -- Ag and Market, they lied to. They lied to the Federal Regulatory Commission in Washington, DC. And it's all documented, all lies, and they're getting away with everything. That's all I have to say.
So the next person I am going to ask to speak is somebody who took the information and the stories and the experiences of Jim Bastak and actually did a whole lot of mapping and GIS analysis and data analysis, and was able to prove to DEC, to Ag and Markets, and to FERC that this farm has been permanently damaged. Stephen Metz, and he's going to talk about other findings.
Thank you, Pramila. Yes, I've worked with James Bastak, and I can't improve on that story. That's a pretty compelling story, obviously. But what I can add is some data analysis that was done on his farm. What we did is we took all the reports that Millennium had provided. They used a contractor, environmental contractor. I'll talk about tonight my public comment. Essentially, 42 of his 46 fields are unrepaired by Millennium. We found in the satellite imagery that there's extensive damage 50 feet in each direction off the pipeline itself. So he's got 100 feet running across that -- I don't know exactly how far it is, but it's definitely at least a half a mile of severe impacts to his farm that are not being repaired. This is a simple fact. I'll be presenting it tonight in the DEC comment period. That is something that has to be addressed. You cannot let pipeline companies come in and continue to ruin more farmland. And the fact is, on this particular project, the majority of land that's going to be impacted is farmland. That is a fact. Where in agricultural districts, those farmers are going to take the brunt of this project. And what's really important to understand is that each one of these farmers is going to have to mitigate these damages on their own, just like James Bastak had to do. He has no help. He doesn't have anybody in the county to help him. He gets bounced around from one agency to another agency. We're in this thing a half a decade, and this gentleman has yet to see any compensation at all for that land that's been ruined. Okay? That's unacceptable. In addition to that impact, I'll be also talking a bit about environmental justice, which is a huge issue here in Middletown. We did a whole analysis on that. That is a travesty in the making right now. We also have issues with water resources that are really plaguing Millennium at this point in time. We have an alignment that they have increased the price almost 50% since they proposed the project. DEC, Millennium does not have control over their water crossings on this project. We've seen several recent high-profile accidents that have taken place on the Rover Pipeline and also the pipeline that's just south of us, Mariner 2 East, using the same exact techniques that Millennium will employ, which is called HDD. This is not a safe method. Your water resources are not protected because of this project. We'll also be talking about several different impacts that other individuals will bring up in the comment period, so I'll be looking forward to hearing the public finally get its due. You know, you should have a public outreach before you start a project, not when you end it. And you shouldn't have, you shouldn't -- You shouldn't have a deadline a week to get your comments in.
And, you know, you've heard about farmland impacts, wetland impacts, health and safety impacts, a rigged regulatory process, and part of, one of the other casualties has been cultural resources. Our area is very well-known for cultural resources because we are the original, this entire area, the original Ramapo Lenape settlement. Because of the Walkeel River, because the Walkeel River flows north, it was an extremely important trading route for indigenous populations, and that's why our area is so rich in resources. And this is why, in the past, it had always been protected by DEC. So the next person who's going to talk a little bit about their comment is Michael Van de Rort. He is the historian from the town of Minisink.
The CPV property sits on 700 acres that was purchased in 1735 by Isaac Dulson. In Minisink's 1790 census, it shows that James Dulson had five female slaves. In 1791, Bets was born. She was freed in 1823, James Dulson's slave. It's said in Eager's History of Orange County, 1846, that Bets lived very old and told many stories. And she described this property. She said on Section Lot 12-1-2.2, "That while plowing, they dug up many bones." She locates a Native American burial ground on this property, on Isaac Dulson's property, on the high ground. This is Section 12-1-2.2. With a 7.3 lateral pipeline end, and it will directional drill underneath Route 84 to CPV, it will do it within the Lenape burial ground. We are calling for DEC, the Office of Parks and Historic Structures, for additional testing. We are calling for them for site testing to determine soil that has been destroyed or original. We are asking them to do additional archaeological testing on this site of a known Native American burial ground.
I'm just going to end this with this comment. I see a lot of the union employees walking in, and you know, this was sold to us by the Orange County Partnership, Orange County Partnership, all about ZD, and under the pretext of bringing local jobs and stimulating the local economy. Well, we took photographs, and a vast majority of the workers in the CPV lot are really from out of state, from actually quite far away, so we'll be talking about that in our comments as well. So I just want to tell everybody, please, if you haven't already, sign up for the bus to Albany, because we're telling Cuomo actually to pull the plug on this entire project. Enough of the corruption, you know, enough -- Enough of the corruption, you know, enough of declaring Orange County a sacrifice zone. Pull the plug, cut the cord. It's time to shut this project down. So Reshma and Mary Ann have signed up sheets. If you want to sign up right now for the bus, we have a great local bus company, local business, who donated buses to us. So all we need is you. However you get to Albany, August 10th is absolutely critical. We have got to take our message to Governor Cuomo directly. You cannot sacrifice us, our community, our health, our safety, our children, their future, the climate. It's got to all. And now, this is the red line of resistance. Get your ribbon. We have a ribbon for the red line of resistance. And go inside and tell DEC what you think of this project and tell Governor Cuomo what you think of this project. Thank you. Oh, and also, for those of you just coming in, sign up to speak at the desk. I'm really thrilled with the overwhelming community presence. I don't know how many public hearings we've been to where the community was forced out and displaced by outsiders. So it's so wonderful that we dominate today. Let's all sit together in the center, front, and middle. Thank you.